I welcome you to the special meeting of the municipal council of April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, eleven twelve P. M. Special meeting is now called to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Mister President. Roll call for this municipal council special meeting of Tuesday, April eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two. It's now eleven fifteen P. M. Councilman Abel Aziz. Councilwoman Cotton.
Where's Councilman Uden?
She's calling you for roll call, ma'am.
I know, but I say, where's Councilman Uden?
Oh, God.
He's outside, I think he's coming.
Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
No, it's a roll call for all.
She's here.
Oh, here? What you saying, here? Okay, whatever, you know.
Councilman Jackson. Councilman Mendez.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Mims.
Um, Councilwoman Mims is here.
Councilman Velez.
Present two times.
Thank you. Mister President.
I'm here, Madam Clerk.
Mister President.
Madam Clerk, please read the forty-eight hour notice.
Yes, Mister President. Meeting covered by forty-eight hour notice. Notice of the time, date, location, and agenda of this meeting was transmitted to the North Jersey Herald News, The Record, The Arabic Voice, The Italian Voice, The Persei County Pulse Dominican News, The Quesca International, El Especial, The Patterson Press, The City Post News, Tap into Patterson, in addition to any other publication duly requesting such notices. At or about eleven A. M. on April eleventh, twenty-twenty-three, such noticees were posted on the bulletin board in the offices of the city clerk at City Hall.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Clerk. Please, uh, please read the special meeting notice now, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mister President. City of Patterson notice pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, be advised that the municipal council of the city of Patterson has scheduled a special meeting for Tuesday, April eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three, at nine thirty P. M. to be held in the council chambers, one fifty-five Market Street, third floor, City Hall Patterson, New Jersey, for the purpose of discussing the following matters. Public portion. One, resolution. One is a resolution authorizing a municipal council executive or closed session in or adjoining the city council chambers, one fifty-five Market Street, to discuss pending litigation in the matter of Maria Christina Deutsch versus the city of Patterson. It's a law resolution twenty-three, colon, two four six. Formal action will be taken. Number two, resolution authorizing a municipal council executive or closed session in or adjoining the city council chambers, one fifty-five Market Street, to discuss pending litigation in the matter of Luz Gomez versus the city of Patterson. Law resolution twenty-three, colon, two four seven. Formal action will be taken. Number three, resolution authorizing a municipal council executive or closed session in or adjoining the city council chambers, one fifty-five Market Street, to discuss pending litigation in the matter of Juan R. Wilford versus Robert Moody and the city of Patterson. It's a law resolution twenty-three, colon, two four eight. Formal action will be taken. Number four, resolution authorizing a municipal council executive or closed session in or adjoining the city council chambers, one fifty-five Market Street, to discuss pending litigation in the matter of Christine E. Wilford versus Robert Moody and the city of Patterson. It's a law resolution twenty-three, colon, two four nine. Formal action will be taken. Number five, resolution authorizing a municipal council executive or closed session in or adjoining the city council chambers, one fifty-five Market Street, to discuss pending workers' compensation in the matter of Ronald Humphrey versus the city of Patterson. Law resolution twenty-three, colon, two five zero. Formal action will be taken. Number six, resolution authorizing a municipal council executive or closed session in or adjoining the city council chambers, one fifty-five Market Street, to discuss pending workers' compensation in the matter of Maurice Klein versus the city of Patterson. Law resolution twenty-three, colon, two five one. Formal action will be taken. Number seven, resolution authorizing a municipal council executive or closed session in or adjoining the city council chambers, one fifty-five Market Street, to discuss pending workers' compensation in the matter of Aruberta Delval versus the city of Patterson. Law resolution twenty-three, colon, two five two. Formal action will be taken. Executive sessions. Executive or closed session in or adjoining the city council chambers, one fifty-five Market Street, to discuss pending litigation in the matter of Maria Christina Deutsch versus the city of Patterson, no formal action will be taken. Executive or closed session in or adjoining the city council chambers, one fifty-five Market Street, to discuss pending litigation in the matter of Luz Gomez versus the city of Patterson, no formal action will be taken. Executive or closed session in or adjoining the city council chambers, one fifty-five Market Street, to discuss pending litigation in the matter of Juan R. Wilford versus Robert Moody and the city of Patterson, no formal action will be taken. Executive or closed session in or adjoining the city council chambers, one fifty-five Market Street, to discuss pending litigation in the matter of Christine E. Wilford versus Robert Moody and the city of Patterson, no formal action will be taken. Municipal council executive or closed session in or adjoining the city council chambers, one fifty-five Market Street, to discuss pending workers' compensation in the matter of Ronald Humphrey versus the city of Patterson, no formal action will be taken. Municipal council executive or closed session in or adjoining the city council chambers, one fifty-five Market Street, to discuss pending workers' compensation in the matter of Maurice Klein versus the city of Patterson, no formal action will be taken. Municipal execu- municipal council executive or closed session in or adjoining the city council chambers, one fifty-five Market Street, to discuss pending workers' compensation in the matter of Aruberta Delvalay versus the city of Patterson, no formal action will be taken. The resolutions. Resolution authorizing settlement of pending litigation claim in the matter of Maria Christina Deutsch versus the city of Patterson. Law resolution twenty-three, colon, two five three. Formal action will be taken. Resolution authorizing settlement of pending litigation claim in the matter of Luz Gomez versus the city of Patterson. Law resolution twenty-three, colon, two five four. Formal action will be taken. Resolution authorizing settlement of pending litigation claim in the matter of Juan R. Wilford versus Robert Moody and the city of Patterson. Law resolution twenty-three, colon, two five five. Formal action will be taken. Resolution authorizing settlement of pending litigation claim in the matter of Christine E. Wilford versus Robert Moody and the city of Patterson. Law resolution twenty-three, colon, two five six. Formal action will be taken. Resolution authorizing settlement of pending workers' compensation in the matter of Ronald Humphrey versus the city of Patterson. Law resolution twenty-three, colon, two five seven. Formal action will be taken. And resolution authorizing settlement of pending workers' compensation in the matter of Maurice Klein versus the city of Patterson. Law resolution twenty-three, colon, two five eight. Formal action will be taken. And resolution authorizing settlement of pending workers' compensation in the matter of Aruberta Delvalay versus the city of Patterson. Law resolution twenty-three, colon, two five nine. Formal action will be taken.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Motion for item one through seven to go into executive session.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Velez, second by Councilwoman Mendez.
You want to do the public portion?
Madam Clerk, roll call to for item number one through seven to go to the executive session.
Yes, Mister President. Roll call and items one through seven to go to executive session. Councilwoman Cotton.
Yes.
You can speak.
Councilman Mendez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims.
Yes.
Councilman Udin.
Yes.
Councilman Velez.
Saying that we, yes.
Mister President.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
The votes are six yeses, two absences. Executive session is now open.
Thank you. All those party.
Councilman.
Yes, Madam Clerk. Continue, please.
Anyone who is not affiliated with the executive session, please exit the chambers at this time. You may return following the reconvention of the meeting.
This is a good time. We have to go off the air?
Mister Gonzalez, can we shut the broadcast, please?
Give us a minute. We still live on T. V.
We'll be right back.
Thank you, Mister Fuhr and Mister Gonzalez. Call for a motion to close the executive session for items seven through one to seven.
Move it.
Moved by Councilman Vele- Councilman Mendez, second by Councilman Velez. Roll call of the, uh, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Roll call to close the executive session of the municipal council. Councilwoman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilman Mendez.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Mims.
Yes.
Councilman Udin.
Yes.
Councilman Velez.
What is this for?
To close the executive session.
Okay, closing the secretary.
You said yes, sir?
Oh, yeah.
Mister President.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
The votes are seven yeses, two absences. The executive session is hereby closed.
Madam Clerk, we will now open up the public portion.
Yes, Mister President. We have no, we have no speakers.
See, no move to close the public portion?
Second. Move to close by Councilman Mendez, second by Councilwoman Mims.
Cotton.
I mean, Councilwoman Cotton.
Cotton.
Roll call to close the public portion, Madam Clerk.
Roll call, close the.
Senior one, senior one, please move to close.
We did already.
There's a motion already on the floor, Councilman Velez. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Cotton.
I thought there were two fullys of the one.
Councilman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilman Mendez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims.
Yes.
Councilman Udin.
Yes.
Councilman Velez.
Yes.
Mister President.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
The votes are seven yeses, two absences. Public portion of the special meeting is hereby closed.
Madam Clerk, please read item eighteen through fourteen.
Number eight.
Then we'll take the action.
Okay. Number eight through fourteen, fourteen. Number eight is resolution authorizing settlement of pending litigation claim in the matter of Maria Christina Deutsch versus the city of Patterson. Law resolution twenty-three, colon, two five three. Formal action will be taken.
Move it.
Move.
Move. By Councilman Mendez.
Second. Second by Councilwoman Mims and Councilman Udin. Roll call on item number eight.
They didn't spoke.
Roll call on item number eight for approval. Councilwoman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilman Mendez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims.
Yes.
Councilman Udin.
Yes.
Councilman Velez.
Yes.
Mister President.
Yes.
The votes are seven yeses, two absences. Item number eight is hereby adopted.
Item number nine, Madam Clerk.
Item number nine is resolution authorizing settlement of pending litigation claim in the matter of Luz Gomez versus the city of Patterson. It's law resolution twenty-three, colon, two five four.
So move.
Moved by Councilman Mendez, second by Councilman Velez. Roll call on item number nine.
Roll call on item number nine for adoption. Councilwoman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilman Mendez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims.
I just have a question. While we're voting on these items, the camera is on the clerk. The I, the camera should be pointing toward each council member when they're voting. So I just wanted to put it on the record because it's not displaying that, and I'm sure the public will have those complaints on tomorrow or when they watch it. With that being stated, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Udin.
Yes.
Councilman Velez.
I will, no, he's not learning. He's, no, he's a well expert on that. He, I mean, watching the T. V., switching back and forth, um, saying that our voice is more stronger than a view, so my vote is yes.
Mister President.
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk. Next item.
The votes are seven yeses, two absences. Item number nine is hereby adopted. Item number ten is a resolution authorizing settlement of pending litigation claim in the matter of Juan R. Wilford versus Robert Moody and the city of Patterson. It's a law resolution twenty-three, colon, two five five. Motion.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Velez, second by Councilwoman Mims. Roll call on item number ten.
Roll call on item number ten for adoption. Councilwoman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilman Mendez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims.
I'll wait till the camera refocuses.
Camera focus to her, please.
My vote is yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Udin.
Yes.
Councilman Velez.
Yes.
Mister President.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
The votes are seven yeses, two absences. Item number ten is hereby adopted.
Next item, item number eleven.
Item number eleven is a resolution authorizing settlement of pending litigation claim in the matter of Christine E. Wilford versus Robert Moody and the city of Patterson. It's a law resolution twenty-three, colon, two five six. Motion.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Mendez, second by Councilman Velez. Roll call on item number eleven.
Roll call on item number eleven for approval. Councilwoman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilman Mendez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims.
Yes.
Councilman Udin.
Yes.
Councilman Velez.
Yes.
Mister President.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
The votes are seven yeses, two absences. Item number eleven is hereby adopted.
Item number twelve.
Item number twelve is a resolution authorizing settlement of pending workers' compensation in the matter of Ronald Humphrey versus the city of Patterson. Law resolution twenty-three, colon, two five seven.
Move.
Moved by Councilman Velez, second by Councilman Mendez. Roll call on item number twelve.
Roll call on item number twelve for approval. Councilwoman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilman Mendez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims.
Once again, I'll wait till the cameras focus.
Camera focus, please.
Who you got? You got it? You got it?
He knows.
So he knows.
You had to look at the delay.
My vote is yes.
Councilman Udin.
Yes.
Councilman Velez.
Yes.
Mister President.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
The votes are seven yeses, two absences. Item number twelve is hereby adopted.
Next item.
Item number thirteen is a resolution authorizing settlement of pending workers' compensation in the matter of Maurice Klein versus the city of Patterson. It's a law resolution twenty-three, colon, two five.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Mendez, second by Councilman Velez. Roll call on item number thirteen.
Roll call on item number thirteen for approval. Councilwoman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilman Mendez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims.
Yes.
Councilman Udin.
Yes.
Councilman Velez.
Yes.
Mister President.
Yes.
The votes are seven yeses, two absences. Item number thirteen is hereby adopted.
Next item.
The next item is number fourteen. It's a resolution authorizing settlement of pending workers' compensation in the matter of Aruberta Delvalay versus the city of Patterson. It's a law resolution twenty-three, colon, two five nine.
Move.
Moved by Councilman Velez.
Second.
Second by Councilman Mendez. Roll call on item number fourteen.
Roll call on item number fourteen for adoption. Councilwoman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilman Mendez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims.
So I'm gonna just put it on the floor and make the recommendation. I know, not to pick, and I know he's new. Every time a council person is speaking, it should not be a full array. It should be zoomed in to each of the council members as they are speaking, the same way it's done when the clerk is speaking. That is the way the camera should be operating. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Udin.
Yes.
Councilman Velez.
Um, we had seven cases today. Two was outside counsel, and the remaining was inside counsel. I want to commend, uh, huh?
Four outside.
Yeah, four outside counsel.
Yes, thank you, Councilman.
And so I just want to say kudos to our law department that has saved us taxpayer money in litigation on these cases. Corporation counsel, great job. You take it to us, you say you could have minimized taking outside counsel for these cases, and you have bring it to us to, uh, do it. Kudos to your staff and the work they've been doing. Uh, saying that, and the list, this last case is, my vote is yes. May, do you focus me? Yeah, thank you, you did, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Velez, Mister President.
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. The votes are seven yeses, two absences. Item number fourteen is hereby adopted. That's the end of the.
Good.
Thank you. Motion to close the special, special meeting of April eighteenth, twenty-twenty.
Close, Council President, close.
Can I have the motion?
I did.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Mims, second by Councilman Velez. Roll call to close the special meeting, Madam Clerk.
Roll call to close the special meeting of Tuesday, April eighteenth. Councilwoman Cotton.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just have two comments since we on T. V. My condolences gonna, goes out to, um, Jeffrey Robinson of Jay's Car Wash and the passing of his son. My deepest condolences to the family. Uh, they haven't been putting out any information as of yet, but, um, I know quite sure that we, um, you know, here, we in the city, uh, send our deepest condolences to you, Jeffrey, and the Robinson family. Also, on Saturday, coming at the Bethel New Way, Bethel A. M. E. Church, I'm having my Rosa Parks Neighborhood Association meeting from eleven to twelve-thirty. Please come out. This is the N. R. T. C. money that I am trying to apply for with D. C. A., so please, eleven o'clock this Saturday, Bethel Church, two Auburn Street, uh, under Governor Auburn, from eleven o'clock to twelve-thirty. Thank you, Patterson. Have a good night. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cotton. Councilman Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would think, um, well, first of all, first of all, I, I, I want to acknowledge the Robinson family as well. Um, this city, this entire city should be in mourning. Um, we lost a really good one, and that young man, um, uh, sadly, you know, even with him and, and, um, he was denied opportunities at the Patterson Police Department, Patterson Fire Department. Sadly, this young man was an outstanding, outstanding young man. And, um, you know, we lost, we lost a big life the other day, so my condolences to his father, um, to his entire family, and, um, to all his supporters. Also, I would be, find it to be incredibly irresponsible, um, to, not only to council president, but for all of those who have chosen not to support the effort to televise workshops. We had the gentleman sit here, is now, uh, two, three minutes to twelve, so he sat here the entire night, waiting for a special meeting to televise it, when the entire workshop could have been televised the entire time. Talking about saving money, but yet we're paying people to be here.
He came in at eight-thirty.
Already, so, um, anyway, my vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman Mendez.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So before my vote, um, let me just, um, announce all the Third World residents and the community at large that our next town hall meeting is gonna be on Wednesday, um, the twenty-sixth of this month, from seven to nine, at the Patterson Steam Academy, the old Patterson Catholic, seven sixty-four Eleventh Avenue. We're gonna be having a great, a conversation about safety in our community with the Patterson Police Department, uh, D. P. W. Department, and a member of the administration. Looking forward to see all my Third World residents there and the community at large. Those four, they are open for the entire city of Patterson. Um, let's have that conversation. The last photo, it was great. Um, so I'm looking forward to see the community, uh, together on the twenty-sixth, which is Wednesday. Also, let's, uh, let's keep the family of the victim of violence in our community in our prayer, and let's continue praying for our city. Um, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes. Good night, Patterson.
Thank you, Councilman Mendez. Councilwoman Mims.
So, uh, my prayers go out to, um, Jeff, the mom Terrell, and the entire family and the loss of, um, I guess Jeff Junior, little Jeff, as we called him. Um, and I just want to commend his work ethic, his consistency, and his, um, love for life. He's gonna be greatly missed in this community. I'm sure once, um, the information is out, we'll be able to, uh, talk about it from this side of the dais, to communicate it, or it will be in the newspaper, or definitely social media. So our prayers go out to that family. My prayers go out to all the families of all the victims of shootings and their savants. My prayers go out to the E. Man and the, um, senseless incident that took place in the mosque. Um, and I see, um, that the person is already in custody, but, you know, my prayers go out to him in his healing process and to our great community. I continue to pray for all of our youth in our, our community with all of the incidents and things that are going on, that they will continue to be safe, um, and safeguarded in our community, uh, throughout this process as they go about day, day to day here in the great city of Patterson. On Saturday, May the sixth, we will be having our one thousand women's march here in the city of Patterson. Uh, we will not have any, uh, charge for vendors, it's just resource tables that will be provided at the park. Uh, I'm grateful that Rosa Parks High School, they will be singing, we will have music there, um, and there will be no, no, um, expenditures, except if you want to get a T-shirt, which will be done prior to that. But there's no charge of anything. I want to thank our sheriff's department, who is already committed to be there for, um, protection, and all the other, uh, our councilables, thank you too, um, for you being there as well. Um, so we're super excited. So Saturday, May the sixth, we have a lot of people coming out. I'm gonna shout out W. B. L. S. one oh seven point five, um, for announcing this great event, and so many people from all over the state of New Jersey who have reached out and plan to join us. It is not just for women. Um, I'm putting it out for our council people to please come. Um, this was a vision of Rochelle Davis and Manny Cruz, um, and Rochelle reached out to me to spearhead it for Patterson, um, and I want to commend the amazing committee who we have been meeting every Monday to do, um, and put this together. So shout out to all of everyone, I mean, every organization, every, uh, faith-based leader that's a part of it, the, uh, youth are a part of it, um, our steppers, our cheerleaders, our dancers, our drill teams that will be a part of this event. Um, I think it's gonna be amazing, um, and it's open to everybody, so my council colleagues, please join us in the walk, um, as we walk from the Sonic Temple up to East Side Park. Madam Clerk, thank you for all that you do. Corporation counsel, we're friends again for this week. To Madam B. A., CFO, thank you for all that you do as well. Rafael, thank you for joining the team, and then Ryan for all you do. To our officers, thank you for coming and, and serving with us on tonight. Um, we appreciate it, 'cause you know, tonight is an early night, so you'll get to go home Um, we appreciate it, 'cause you know, tonight is an early night, so you'll get to go home early. It's not four o'clock in the morning, but we appreciate it. To my colleagues, um, thank you for all that you do as well. With that stated, and Sophia, thank you. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Doctor Mims. Councilman Udine?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, we, we are closing, um, the special session where we settled seven of the lawsuit matters. And out of seven, two are presented by outside counsel and five by our in-house counsel. So I really commend that, uh, Corporate Council and your colleagues for doing so and saving money for the city of Patterson. And representing five cases in-house. It's really commendable. Um, besides last weekend, so many of our families lost their kinsmen, loved ones. My sympathy goes out to you again, I said, and I, I'd like to restate it one more time, that if we would not be on live, we would not talk that much and it would not inform people that what's gonna happen next weekend or what's happening right now. So this is why I feel it's important to have the meetings televised so that we can keep you, the people of the city of Patterson, informed. And you would know what's going on in the city council and in the city of Patterson. So this is why, again, I, I'd love to see televised meetings, uh, and in the future somehow engage people without coming to the council chamber. 'Cause we have to understand, and again, the reality of the, of city of Patterson, that our people work, double works, like two full-time jobs to survive. And if they have any question and concern, they have to come here to city council to speak for three minutes. And to speak for three minutes, they have to stand here for three hours and just think about, do they really have that luxury time? So we have to think about finding a solution at how we keep these people engaged in city's business. It's important for us, 'cause time is changing. It's a demand of the time. We cannot really always, and again, counsel, we, we can debate on anything we want to, but again, we, we have to, um, so, um, uh, uh, yeah, uh, council president, you, you state what you already said. So let me cover mine. So, again, uh, thank you, Patterson. I, I'd love to see you informed, uh, you know, always. And I want your engagement in city's business. That's important to me, 'cause, uh, this is what city of Patterson is waiting to see. Uh, thank you again. Uh, thank you, uh, to my, uh, council colleagues, and I'm seeking for uh, a positive change in city of Patterson. With that being said, uh, my vote is yes to close this session.
Thank you, Councilman Udine. Councilman Velez?
So, um, as I said it before, um, not only because we clarify statements or situation this council means that we against things that aren't the agenda or going to be in the agenda. Um, you know, somebody say we have one hundred sixty-seven thousand residents in the, oh, more, in the city of Patterson, and they all have to get engaged. And yes, we are transferring. We are transferring our decisions on the regular meeting. So it would be a good idea if we want to involve all the sixty-seven thousand plus resident in the city of Patterson to look at televised workshop. Let's do a Zoom. All of them can start calling in the phone, and we could entertain all of them. We could do a Zoom meeting. Well, you agree, guys, right?
Yeah.
Uh, we do a Zoom, the workshop. Everybody's gonna have the participation, not only in the audience, those that want to come and call on the phone, they could do so. Seniors, people that's in hospitals, et cetera, et cetera. Because somebody stated in the podium, in the, in the, in the, in the public sitting there, I don't have cable. So they probably could see a Zoom meeting through YouTube. So let's do a Zoom meeting, workshop Zoom meeting. What were you in bed with? We could amend it, Council President. Uh, Council, uh, Corporate Council. We could amend, we could amend. No, no, moving forward, we could have that discussion.
Were you closing the special meeting?
But moving forward, we could put into, into your, into your ordinance-
You could put a resolution or-
Yeah. Workshop be televised through Zoom meeting. And everybody wanna call, they could call, because a lot of people is not coming here. They watching from home, and they probably want to talk too. So, yeah, yeah. So we could, we could meet, we could meet in the middle, right? We could televise Zoom meeting, and everybody could call in. We could have a hundred calls, and we entertain it. And, and that's engaging the community. I just came with the idea in the head now. So, so that, it's up to us to agree or not. Um, so, last but not least, you know, Jay, the Robinson family, you know, every time you go to that car wash, he always was smiling, always taking care of people, no matter you had money or not. He always was taking care of people. It was a well-known business in that corner, Summer Street. And, um, I believe was, uh, Summer and, yeah, Montgomery. Our heart goes to the family, condolences to them. Please advise it, Councilwoman, if you know when it's gonna be the viewing and the funeral, for we could be there. Nah, yeah, please. Um, also, you know, w, w, we lost our, uh, well-known sheriff, Edwin Englehart, a longtime resident in the fifth ward. That he used to live up in the top of the, uh, Grand Hardware Store. Since nineteen seventy-four to two thousand and one, he was our sheriff. The only sheriff did not use uniform. He always was in suit. And you could Google that. Um, our heart goes to the family. The only thing I'm disappointed that, I don't know if any council member received any notice of when was the funeral, when was the viewing, because they did a nice, uh, day, the other day, at the cathedral at Englehart, the sheriff. And, 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 uh, and, and we didn't get invited. We didn't got no information. We found out through Facebook. So apologies to the family, uh, the Englehart family that we was not there, we was not engaged in no information when the viewing was gonna be or the funeral at the time. We find out because we saw it on Facebook and the articles out. Um, once again, thank you, Corporate Council, how hard work you've been doing in that legal department, and, um, yes. I never yell to my, um, administration.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman Velez.
I could talk to them. That's why we get things done in the city. Madam Clerk, thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
Last but not least, the gentleman up there, the gentleman up there is not sitting up there since six-thirty in the, in the afternoon. He came in at eight-thirty in the, in the night, because the, the special meeting was gonna be at nine o'clock. So don't, let, let's not give wrong information, right, Madam Clerk? So he came in at eight-thirty because the nine o'clock special meeting was announced. And saying that, I put everything to the bank. This gentleman has well-good experience working with other municipalities doing the same thing. The only thing I find out is that the Quimmin software was not updated. So there's a lot of things that had to be updated for he could work, 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 get his work done up there. So let's be fair in our comments. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilman Velez. Mister President?
Thank you, uh, Madam Clerk. I just want to clarify again. We talk about community engagement. We talk about transparency.